Peace be upon you, this is Aid Mirza from reading our reason dot com and we're gonna be continuing on with our Quran study session. This is session number four, we left off at chapter three verse one twenty. So let's just begin from there. Uh, this is brother against translation, the Quran and complete revelation and I'm gonna be on reader dot corona dot com. Uh, let's begin in the name of God, the almighty, the merciful. I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. And when thou didst leave thy household early to assign the believers their station, their stations for the battle and God was hearing and knowing. When two groups among you were about to lose heart, but God was their ally and in God let the believers place their trust. Now, when this word occurs, why is it's talking about um, it's recalling something from the past. So this is a reference to the earlier battle and we're gonna look at that God willing some other time. When it occurs in the Quran, but anyway, just know that this is referencing uh, an earlier battle in which the uh, the believers were victorious against um, basically really bad odds. So uh, God is reminding him of reminding the messenger Muhammad about that battle that God helped him in that battle. When two groups among you were about to lose heart, but God was their ally and in God let the believers place their trust. And get God had already helped you at brother, so that was the battle. When you were despised, then be in prudent fear of God that you might be grateful. Now, obviously, a traditional has the stories about this battle, he calls it the battle of brother. Um, it might be called the battle of brother or as brother Gans has noted here that uh, this could also mean full moon. So the battle of the full moon regardless doesn't matter, just just know that this is the battle in which the most the believers were faced with really bad odds, they were, you know, outnumbered, but God helped them and they were victorious. And God had already helped you at brother when you were despised, then be in prudent fear of God that you might be grateful. When thou sets to the believers, is it not sufficient for you that your Lord should supply you with three thousand angels sent down? Verily, if you are patient and in prudent fear and they rush upon you of a sudden, your Lord will supply you with five thousand angels having marks. And God made it not save as glad tidings for you and that your hearts might be reassured thereby. And there is no help saved from God, the exalted in might, the wise. That he might cut off a part of those who ignore warning or suppress them, so they turn back disappointed. No matter, no part of the matter is thine, whether he turns towards them or punishes them, for they are wrongdoers. And to God belongs what is in the heavens and what is in the earth. He forgives whom he wills and punishes whom he wills and God is forgiving and merciful. Verse one thirty continues, oh, you who heed warning, consume not usury doubled and redoubled and be in prudent fear of God that you might be successful. And be in prudent fear of the fire prepared for the false claimers of guidance and obey God and the messenger that you might obtain mercy. So this is talking about um, consuming usury. Uh, the Quran doesn't make a distinction between user your interest, the the word is viva, which just means an increase. So any money that you make off of the the capital is considered viva according to Quran. So this whole debate that we have going on uh, that the Quran is condemning usury, but it's allowing interest because the the modern understanding is that usury is just interest that is um, too much. Regardless, the Quran doesn't subscribe to that worldview, uh, any money you make off uh, your principal, if you uh, give someone a loan is considered viva, so the yahayul azina amanu, these are the believers, oh, you eat warning is how brother Gans is translating it. Uh, they are warned that they should not be consuming usury. And to obey God and the messenger, now this is again the tradition, the traditionalist trigger phrase where he says that this means that you are supposed to follow the literature that he uh, his forbears have collected in the form of the hadith. Uh, that's not what it means, it's just meaning obey God and the messenger and uh, the speech of the messenger is recorded in the Quran. Uh, you can go through it when you search for say thou in this translation, you're gonna see what the messenger was being told to say, so that's what that means. And regardless, you can see in the context here that this is talking to the believers at the time of the messenger, he was with them, this is nothing to do with us. Um, this is another point that seems to escape the traditionalist. Okay, verse one thirty-three. And why one on one with another for forgiveness from your Lord? And a garden as wide as the heavens and the earth prepared for those of prudent fear. And how would you lie for forgiveness from your Lord, it tells you. Those who spend in prosperity and adversity and who control their wrath and forgive men and God loves the doers of good. So these are the qualities of the people who are uh, vying for forgiveness from their Lord. And those who, when they commit sexual immorality or wrong their souls, remember God and ask forgiveness for their transgressions. And who forgives transgressions save God and persist not in what they did when they know. Those they reward is forgiveness from their Lord and gardens beneath which rivers flow, they abiding eternally therein and excellent is the reward of those who act. Practices have passed away before you, so travel in the earth and see how is the final outcome of the deniers. Uh, this is referring to the sonnet of God, the practice of God, which is that he send down. Um, he sends messengers to warn people um, and when the messengers are ridiculed, mocked and ultimately persecuted. Uh, then God destroys that uh, the people. So this is the practice of God is uh, is bringing our attention to that, go look in the land and see what happened to the people before you who denied their messengers. This is a clear statement for mankind and guidance and admonition for those of prudent fear, so this is, this, this is a clear statement. Um, there, there's footnotes here that I encourage you to read at your own leisure, obviously, I can't go through them all, but there's a lot great insights in here from brother Gans. Worst one thirty-nine and faint not nor grieve and you will be the superior ones if you be believers. See, this is the thing that Muslims claim to be believers, Muslims claim to be uh, on the right guidance, then why are they not, why are they not superior? They're the ones humiliated, I know. I mean, I, I lived in Pakistan all my life, Pakistan is not in a good place, none of the other Muslim countries are. So this should cause us to think a little bit about what, what this horse is saying and we're doing and why things are not matching up. If injury touches you, there has touched people injury the like thereof and those are the days we alternate among men. Both that God might know those who heed warning and take witnesses among you and God loves not the wrongdoers. And that God might refine those who heed warning and eliminate the false claimers of guidance. Brother Gans is an excellent point here uh, for witnesses, what that means that God is taking witnesses among us. And it has nothing to do with with martyr martyrdom, that's the understanding that shohoda means martyr in the cause of God, but the word with shohoda means witness. And a witness is um, that you stand up and you proclaim the truth and you warn your people and then you are witness. And that's what it means here, because the whole, the primary duty of the believers and the messenger was to warn, see, this is what escapes the traditionalist, he would, that's what it means to that God is taking witnesses among us. On the day of judgment, the witnesses will be called, this is another thing that is in the Quran. And that God might remind, refine those who heed warning and eliminate the false clamors of guidance, so by doing this, God is testing the believers and he is refining, obviously, that means to strengthen them um, and also to destroy uh, the Al Kafirun, the Al Kafirun here, this is a, a specific set of people, it's not the generality of mankind who are disbelievers, that's just the Al Azina Kafaru. Um, I encourage you to look at brother Gans uh, addenda to the Quran for, for more information on this. Or did you think that you will enter the garden before God knows those who strive among you or knows the patient? And you had wished for death before you met it and now you have seen it with your own eyes, dot, 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 and you flinched basically. You were wishing for that, but now you, when you saw you flinched, obviously, that is, is, is that is that, right, worse one forty-four. And Muhammad is only a messenger, messengers have passed away before him, if then he dies or is killed, will you turn back on your heels and he who turns back on his heels does no harm to God at all and God will reward the grateful. And it is not for a soul to die saved by the leave of God at a writ determined. And whoso desires the reward of the world, we give him thereof, and whoso desires the reward of the hereafter, we give him thereof and we reward the grateful. And alongside how many a prophet have fought many stoutly devout men and they fainted not at what befall them in the cause of God, neither did they weaken, nor did they, we, nor did they yield and God loves the patient. And their word was only that they said, our Lord, forgive thou us our transgressions and our excess in our affair and make thou firm our feet and help thou us against the people of the false chambers of guidance. See, you can see that the, the, the false chambers of guidance, the Al Kafirun, this is the religionist, by the way, these are the, the enemies of the believers. Uh, very, we need to be very careful of religionists because they are the enemies of the believers, they fought the believers too. So God gave them the reward of the world and the good reward of the hereafter and God loves the doers of good. Oh, you who heed warning, if you obey those who ignore warning, they will drive you back on your heels and you will turn back as losers. Worse one fifty, the truth is God is your protector and he is the best of helpers. We will cast into the hearts of those who ignore warning terror because they have ascribed a partnership with God to that for which we have, for which he sent not down authority and their shelter is the fire and evil is the dwelling of the wrongdoers. So this is now talking about the, the Al Azina Kafaru, which is those who believe. One of the peculiar things about those who do not believe Al Azina Kafaru is that it says that it is the same whether you warn them, do not warn them, they do not believe. So they will not change, basically. Um, the other thing is that they are ascribing a partnership with God. So this is something important, now ascribing a partnership with God um, in, in a religious context, obviously, it means to say that God has a son or that, you know, other entities have power uh, that they are sharing with God. Um, but also a, at a deeper level, uh, it's to think that anything has power over you. And so this is really what the state is about, the state has uh, has made itself into a god and people worship the state because people serve the state, people um, people look to the state for, for help and that's ascribing a partnership with God, so you, you can be of a secular mindset and say, I'm an atheist, but you would still be ascribing a partnership with God if you are considering an outside authority or even inside, if you believe that um, if you, if you follow your own lusts, that's also as covering a partnership with God because you are doing what your lust is commanding to do, so uh, this is kind of the, the way the Quran uses this term. And the other thing is that they are ascribing a partnership with, with God, that for which he has sent down no authority. Now, this is something that the Quran again and again says, it says, bring your evidence. Uh, so the Quranic viewpoint is if you have evidence that God has authorized this, then bring your evidence. Where, where does it say in the scriptures that you hold uh, that you are to ascribe a partnership with God? And God was indeed true in his promise to you when you were aware of them by his leave, when you had lost heart and disputed concerning the affair and rebelled after he had shown you what you love. Among you is he who desires the world and among you is he who desires the hereafter. Then he turned you away from them that he might try you and he has pardoned you and God is bountiful to the believers. Now, traditionalist here says that this is referring to the, the believers basically rebelling against the command of the messenger um, and breaking rank because they were looking together the spoils of war. It might be true, uh, the other interpretation is that this is talking about the believers, some of them were desiring to be killed in the cause of God and some of them wanted to escape with their lives and that's why they hesitated. Um, God knows best, it's for the believers at the time uh, the battle occurred, so um, you know, I don't want to speculate on this. Worst one fifty-three, when you were ascending and paying no heed to anyone and the messenger calling you from your rear, so he required that you would grieve upon grief that you might not grieve for what eluded you or what befell you and God is aware of what you do. Then he sent down upon you after distressed security, slumber overcoming a number of you. And a number had grieved themselves thinking about God other than the truth, the thought of ignorance saying, have we any part in the affair? Say thou, the affair belongs entirely to God. They hide within themselves what they reveal not to thee, saying, had we any part in the affair, we would not have been slain here. Say thou, had you been in your houses, those for whom killing was decreed would have gone forth to their resting places. And that God might try what is in your breasts and that he might refine what is in your hearts and God knows what is in the breasts. So basically, a takeaway from this is that if that is ordained for you, you will, you will go to your resting place, there's nothing you can do. You know, it says somewhere else in the Quran uh, that they said, don't go or you'll be killed and it says uh, avert from yourselves death, death if you are truthful, so you can, nobody can avert death, um, there's no guarantees. It's already fixed in time when you're gonna die. Um, and the other thing is that the believers here were questioning, you know, why, why didn't God help us, this is what they're saying, you know, why, why did God? Um, that, you know, why, why didn't, why couldn't we take any, any action to, to basically not be killed? Because some believers were apparently killed uh, and God instructed the messenger to say, the affair belongs entirely to God, I mean, the whole matter belongs to God. Who dies and who lives? Those who turn back among you the day the two hosts met, the Satan caused them to slip only for some of what they earned. But God has pardoned them, God is forgiving and clement. So this kind of supports the second interpretation of the reading that uh, the believer, some of them wanted to escape with their lives. Uh, they flinch, you know, it, it, at the beginning of this narrative, we, we, we already read when God said that you had wished for death, but then you saw it. Uh, dot, 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 so basically that you flinched, so here's confirming this, those who turn back among you the day the two hosts met. And this is how the Quran refers to this battle, the day the two hosts met, so this is important, just remember this. The Satan caused them to slip only for some of what they, what they earned, so basically, they had done some evil and for that reason, the Satan was able to um, cause them to slip, they, 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 they flinched, they, they turned back. But God has pardoned them, God is forgiving and clement. Oh, you who heed warning, be not like those who ignore warning and say of their brothers when they travel in the earth or are on expedition. Had they been with us, they would not have died or been killed. That God might make that a sorrow in their hearts, for God gives life and gives death and God sees what you do. I see this a lot, you know, it, when I was growing up uh, in, in, you know, the Muslim environment that people are always grieving about stuff like this, oh, you know, he, he died in a car accident, I wish he hadn't gone that day or, you know, etc., etc., but this is what God is saying here, that it doesn't matter, the, everyone has a place and time to die. Um, and, and all by, by you, by you saying these things, you're just making uh, you're making your life difficult. Um, because this thing stays with you, you know, that you think you could have prevented someone's um, someone's, someone from uh, dying or being injured or etc. Worst one fifty-seven, and if you are killed or die in the cause of God, God pardon from God and mercy are better than what they amass. And if you die or are killed to God, will you be gathered, day of judgment? And because of the mercy of God, thou wast lenient with them and hadst thou been coarse and stern, they would have disbanded from about thee. So pardon thou them and ask thou forgiveness for them and ask, take thou counsel with them in the affair. And when thou hast made a decision, place thou thy trust in God, God loves those who would place their trust aright. I want you to pay attention to this, God loves those, because you're gonna see this quite a lot in the Quran too, so try to emulate those qualities, he says, God says, God loves those who repent to him, God loves who would place their trust aright in him, basically, they trust him alone. Um, so just pay attention to these things as well. If God helps you, none can defeat you, but if he forsakes you, who is there who can help you after him? And in God, let the believers place their trust and it is not for a prophet that he should coerce. And who so coerces will come with what he coerced on the day of resurrection. Then will every soul be paid in full what it earned and they will not be wronged. To continue worse once sixty-two. Is then he who seeks approval of God like one who incurs wrath from God and whose shelter is gehenna and evil is the journey's end. Then you, okay, so try to seek the approval of God. They have degrees in the sight of God and God sees what they do. God indeed showed favor to the believers when he raised up among them a messenger among themselves, reciting to them his proofs and increasing them in purity and teaching them the writ and wisdom, though they were before in manifest error. Do you, do you not say, when calamity has befallen you, you having caused the double thereof, whence is this? Say thou, it is from yourselves, God is over all things powerful. Okay, so what's this mean, okay, so like I said, the, 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 the previous battle in which the believers were successful, they were victorious. Um, they wrought calamity upon the uh, the, the disbelievers, right? So God is saying that now that calamity has befallen you, even though you caused the one come out calamity to the unbelievers in the previous battle, that now all of a sudden you're saying, where is this coming from? Where did victory come to you from, from God, so this is from God as well. You see, it's the same, anything that's good or evil is coming from God. Now, the critical thing is, it says, it is all from yourselves. Now, what does that mean, it means that all is from God, uh, the good is from God. Uh, but the evil is because of the things that you have done, is the evil that is being repaid to you, this is how it works. Um, because everything is from God, right, everything's coming from God, God is yeah, over everything, but um, at a micro level, uh, the good that you're getting is from God as a mercy, but the evil you're getting is actually from yourselves, what you're doing, your, your own evil deeds, you're, you're tasting them. And we're gonna see this, this is gonna be expanded upon later. So he, they're saying, whence is this, where is this coming from, the calamity that befell, befell us, say thou, it is from yourselves, as in your, your own actions, your own evil deeds caused it. God is over all things powerful. And what befell you the day that two hosts met was by the leave of God that he might know the believers, see? It's all from God, God allowed it to happen and that he might know the vavars. So this was the reason why it happened. And it was said to them, come fight in the cause of God or repel. They said, had we known of fighting, we would have followed you, they were near to denial that they then to fate, saying with their mouths what was not in their hearts. And God is most aware of what they conceal. Those who set up their brothers when they stayed back, had they obeyed us, they would not have been killed, say thou, then avert from yourselves death if you be truthful. So um, this is just an echo what uh, was earlier said. And think not of those who were killed in the cause of God as dead, nay, they are alive with their Lord receiving provision. Exalting in what God has bestowed upon them of his bounty and rejoicing in those behind them who are yet to join them, that no fear will be upon them, nor will they grieve. Rejoicing in favor and bounty from God and that God causes not to be lost the reward of the believers. Those who respect, those who responded to God and the messenger after injury had befallen them, for those of them as do good and are in prudent fear is a great reward. Those to whom men said, the people have gathered against you, so be afraid of them, but increased them in faith and they said, sufficient for us is God and excellent is the disposal of affairs. So they returned with favor and bounty from God, evil not touching them and they sought the approval of God and God is possessor of tremendous bounty. That is but the Satan putting his allies in dread of it, but fear them not and fear me if you be believers. This is worse one seventy-five, so basically that Satan, he is putting um, in Arabic, it says uh, inna mazali komu shaitanu yu khavwifu uli yahu. So putting in dread, uli yahu, his allies, putting, putting them in fear. Uh, so he, the way Shaitan operates is that fear, right, this is what we see day in and day out, it's the fear, the, 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 the the propaganda machine that we have, that's all it runs on fear, 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 always trying to scare you. Uh, so this is what Shaitan does, he's putting his allies in dread, so this is what, you know, the people were saying that be afraid. Um, because they were themselves afraid because they are the, the allies of Satan. And uh, those who put this trust in God, they said, no harm can come to us, basically, unless God wills. And let not grieve thee those who compete in denial, they will never harm God at all. God desires not to make for them a portion in the hereafter and they have a great punishment. Those who buy denial at the price of faith, they will never harm God, God at all and they have a painful punishment. And let not, and let not those who ignore warning think that we but grant them respite good for their souls, but we but grant them respite that they might increase in sin and they have a humiliating punishment. Again, Al Azina Kafaru are people who will never believe, okay? So it's not that God is giving them time to repent, it's nothing to do with that, he is giving them time so they only do more evil deeds. Worst one seventy-nine, God will not leave the believers in that which you are in until he distinguishes the bad from the good. And God will not apprise you of the unseen, but God chooses of his messengers whom he wills, so believe in God and his messengers. And if you believe and are in prudent fear, for you is a great reward. Okay, so God will not apprise the believers of uh, of the unseen, this is uh, in the Quranic worldview is the, the messengers that are chosen and God gives them some knowledge of the unseen. Um, and he will not leave the believers be, he will, he, it's almost like, uh, you know, don't get too comfortable because you will be tested. Worst one eighty, and let not those who are miserly with what God gives them of his bounty think it is good for them. The truth is, it is evil for them, hung about their necks will be that which they were miserly on the day of resurrection. And to God belongs the inheritance of the heavens and the earth and God is aware of what you do. God has heard the saying of those who say, God is poor and we are rich, we will record what they say and their killing of the prophets without cost. And we will say, taste the punishment of the consuming fire, for it is that your hand sent ahead and that God is not unjust to the servants, see? Any evil that happens to you is because you, what your hands have earned, they have sent ahead of you. Those who said, God has made a covenant with us that we believe not any messenger until he brings us an offering consumed by fire. Say thou, there came to you messengers before me with clear signs and with what you say, why then did you kill them if you be truthful? And if they deny thee, then denied were the messengers who were before thee, who came with the clear signs and the writings and the eliminating writ. Every soul will taste death and you will but be paid in full your rewards on the day of resurrection. And whoso is removed from the fire and made to enter the garden, he has attained and the life of this world is only the enjoyment of delusion. So, yeah, we will all taste that. And uh, we will be paid in full on the day of resurrection. Uh, it, it's here, it's a Yom al-Qiyamah, which means the day of um, yeah, raising up, but uh, if you remember in Su al-Fati, I was Yom Ad Deen, which uh, uh, is the day of the, the, the word Dean actually just means transaction, so that's the day on which we will be given in full are uh, what, what we deserve really. And whoso is removed from the fire and made to enter the garden, he has attained and the life of this world is only the enjoyment of delusion. You will be tried in your wealth and in yourselves and you will hear from those giving the writ before you and from the idolaters, much hindrance. But if you are patient and in prudent fear, that is among the resolution of affairs. Uh, isn't that true, I mean, if you stand up and you proclaim the truth, you're gonna hear a lot of stuff from Muslims, yeah, they're gonna make your life a living hell, um, but that's just the price you have to pay. And when God took an agreement of those given the writ, you are to make it plain to mankind and not to conceal it. Then they cast it behind their backs and sold it at a cheap price and evil is what they bought. Now, obviously, when Muslims read this words, they think, oh, it's talking about the Jews and the Christians. No, it's just saying those given the writ, which now in twenty twenty-four means the Muslims as well, because they are also given the writ. And they also hide uh, the writ, they don't, the, the, the doctors of the law, the scholars of Islam, they don't make um, the Quran plain to mankind, what they're doing is they're using the Quran as the springboard for their hadith literature and um, but God knows what they do. Think not those who exalted what they have accomplished and love to be praised for what they have not done. And think them not in a place of safety from the punishment and they have a painful punishment. So I mean, you know, you, you can read this more carefully and he, the thing with the Quran is a lot of times what, when it talks about these things, you really have to kind of go back and look through your experience and, and see, okay, can I identify certain people who do this? Um, because it's talking about certain people that you've encountered in your life. And to God belongs the dominion of the heavens and the earth and God is over all things powerful. In the creation of the heavens and the earth and the alternation of night and day are proofs for men of understanding. See, the thing with the Quran is that it's not, the, the proofs are in there and the proofs are actually, it's referring you to the proofs that you see. Um, that is it, there's no miracles, I mean, people always looking for miracles, but really everything you see around you is a miracle, that's a proof of God, I mean, how is the sun traveling the sky and, you know, how are the clouds um, between the heaven and the earth, I mean, that's what the Quran is, keeps on referencing again and again, those are proofs. Uh, the Quran is referencing this, go look, you know, think about this. Those who remember God standing and sitting and on their sides and reflect upon the creation of the heavens and the earth. Our Lord, thou created this note to no purpose, glory be to thee and protect thou us from the punishment of the fire. See, the bit, this believers, they think that all of this was created for no purpose, really, that's what they think. But we know, the believers know that this was not created for in vanity, this was created for a specific purpose. Um, this life and we were, we were going to be tested in it. Our Lord, whom thou causes to enter the fire, him hast thou disgraced and there are for the wrongdoers no helpers. Our Lord, whom thou causes to enter the fire, him hast thou disgraced, and there are for the wrongdoers no helpers. Our Lord, we have heard a caller calling to God, to faith. Believe in your lord, and we have believed, our lord, forgive thou us our transgressions, and remove thou from us our evil deeds, and take thou us with the virtuous. Our lord, give thou us what thou hast promised us by thy messengers, and disgrace thou us not on the day of resurrection. Thou will not break the appointment, and their lord responded to them. I cause not to be lost the work of any that works among you, male or female, you are of one another. And those who immigrated and were turned out of their homes and were hindered in my cause and fought and were killed. I will remove from them their evil deeds and I will make them enter gardens beneath which rivers flow as a reward from God. And God with him is the best rewards. Verse one ninety-six, let not delude thee the going to and fro of those who ignore warning in the land. A little enjoyment then is their shelter gehenna and evil is the resting place. So don't be fooled by the lazina kafaru, the disbelievers, how they are um. I like the rendering of takallubu as um where did I read that meaning? As um strutting, strutting, strutting in the land, you know, how they strut in the land, like, okay, we own the place. So don't be deluded by them walking to and fro, as in they, you know, they, they're, they own the land. Uh they only have a little enjoyment and then their, their shelter is gehenna and evil is the resting place. Verse one ninety-eight, but those who are in prudent fear of their lord, they will have gardens beneath which rivers flow, they abiding eternally therein as a welcome from God, and what is with God is better for the virtuous. And among the doctor of the law, those who believe in God and what was sent down to you and what was sent down to them, humble towards God. They sell not the proofs of God at a cheap price, those have the reward with their lord, God is swift in reckoning. Now, this is talking about doctor of the law, as in the rabbis. Okay, or, or the priests, if you wanna look at, if you wanna consider the nasala, the, the, the Christians. Um at the time of Muhammad, because they, they believed in the messenger. See, they're still called doctor of the law because they were doctor of the law, as in they understood their scriptures. But now they believe in God and what was sent down to you, which is what was sent down to, uh it's not saying thee, to you. See, this is talking about the believers and the collective. Um I mean, here now, in this, in today's age, i- if a scholar of Islam, he starts believing in the Quran alone. Then this would apply to him as well, most of them don't, actually, I haven't encountered anyone who does, uh but I might be wrong. Verse two hundred, oh you who heed warning, be patient and why in patience and be steadfast and be in prudent fear of God, that you might succeed. So that finishes up chapter three. God willing, we're gonna start in chapter four in the next session. Um yeah, and we'll pick out from there, God willing, until next time, peace and blessings be upon you.